Order if you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is open forum, and I don't believe we have anyone signed up for open forum, so we'll move on. Move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay, sounds like none. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
We approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Oh, second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All right, any discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that moves us on to six. Regular session, city council receives staff recommendations and public input on the following items and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. A, consider approval of a contingent fee contract and ordinance with Purdue Brandon, Fielder Collins and Mott LLP pursuant to Article 103.0031 of the Code of Criminal Procedure, said contract being for the collection of delinquent government receivables owed to the City of Nacogdoches, and notice of said contract is posted with the agenda in accordance with Section 2254 of the Government Code. Municipal judge, hello, how are you?
Hello, mayor, city council. I'm Heather Watts, I'm the municipal court judge, and I'm asking you to consider approval of a contingency fee contract and ordinance with the firm of Purdue Brandon. This is for the collection of delinquent filings and fees owed to the city through the municipal court. Patrick Woods, an attorney with the firm of Purdue Brandon, is here to answer any questions, as I also will be able to answer any as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak or just here to answer questions?
If you have questions, tap it out to answer them if I can.
Okay, great. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Counsel, questions? Council member Bellinger, do you have anything?
I have no questions right now.
Okay, great.
No, no, mayor.
Okay. I mean, I think we've all looked at it and understand what we've got here.
Okay.
So, I guess, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Gen. item 6A, as is it written?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion, Council member Bellinger, did you?
Since it's an ordinance, I just didn't know if we needed a different wording, but seems like we're fine.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Again, other comments? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move to 6B, hold a discussion, receive direction regarding the city's communication efforts, which include an update on the activities of the city council-appointed Communications Committee, Community Services Assistant Director.
Mayor, counsel?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I just kind of ran right through it. Thank you, look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir, thank you all so much, we appreciate it.
Mayor, counsel, Jessica Sal, Community Services Assistant Director. I'm here today to give you all an update on city communication and then the status of the city's communication task force. So, as you all know, city council appointed the Communication Task Force on September 21st of 2021. Y'all appointed 10 community members, we have nine currently. And here on the screen, you can see their objectives, was determined existing communications structures and efforts, both in our general communication as well as our emergency communication, gather input from key communities, and review and assess all those findings, and then deliver conclusions and recommendations on how the city communicates with the public. The city, or the Communication Task Force really started off by getting a lot of background on city communication. We do a lot of things, we have a lot of different channels we communicate by, there's a lot of different city departments that are involved in communication, so we really started off with some of that background. The task force first met with Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, Emergency Management, our IT department on how we currently communicate, you know, what emergencies are, what social media channels we have, what applications we use, and just kind of our standard mode of communication. And then they kind of started working on some of the immediate communication projects we had. The first one was the conversion of Blackboard Connect to Hyperreach, which is essentially the software on the back end of our NACWise Alert system. So, we switched over to Hyperreach. They also discussed, you know, how we use this, whether it's for public notifications on, hey, we have a parade, or if it's just for emergency, that, you know, we have a winter storm coming. And of course, the task force decided to have this as just emergency communication. We didn't want to spam people with, you know, there's a Christmas parade or something else going into town. We wanted people to understand when they got a NACWise Alert from the city, it was something they needed to pay attention to, and not something they were going to opt out of because we were talking to them too much. The Communication Task Force also had a big hand in our website redesign. We do have a web redesign every couple of years, it's part of our contract. And the biggest change you'll see to our website is now when you go to nacttx.us, you see our portal page. They decided that was probably the best way to go because we really wanted kind of a community-centered webpage. So, that way, if you're looking to start a business in Nacogdoches, move to Nacogdoches, visit us, when you go there, you can then click on either the CVB's event calendar, NISD, if you're trying to fair out where to send your kids to school, the Chamber of Commerce, SFA. So, that way, it's kind of a one-stop shop for you. So, we did that website redesign. It also closely connects all of our social media pages, very prevalent on our website, because it's the way of the world that a lot of people either find our social media pages first and then go to the website, or find our website and then go straight to our social media pages. So, we wanted those two to connect really well. They also reviewed an old city communication plan that was based on some data from around 2005, some surveys, looked at that, and then we did our first city staff panel interview. The task force decided we really wanted to dive deep with our city staff on what we currently do, what works well, what could be improved, to identify some of those easy wins. We had our first city staff panel interview on October 7th, met with IT, engineering, community services, public works, and city administration. We have our next one scheduled for tomorrow with our Police Department and Fire Department. And really, we identified some easy wins just off that. Just things that city staff, when we're working hard with communications, sometimes you don't see the forest for the trees. So, it's things like we need a better portal page for NACWise, it really explains what the program is rather than just prompting you to sign up immediately, kind of explains kind of what we do. There's also easy things like, hey, when we have something really important, send it to our top five biggest employers and have kind of an understanding with them that if we send you something, please send it out to your employees, because that gets us a critical mass of people very, very quickly. So, our next steps is to conduct our additional city staff panel tomorrow. After that, our Communication Task Force is going to be meeting and doing one-on-one interviews with some of our community partners and our communication professionals. So, they'll reach out to places like KTRE, the Daily Sentinel, Alingua, and those communication partners we talk to and figure out, are we communicating with the right person? Are we sending you the right information? How many people do you get this information out to? And then talking to city partners, people that we communicate with during emergencies especially, like our hospital boards, the county, and make sure that we are making the most of those partnerships. Once that is complete, they'll, each task force member is committed to doing one focus group, and with those key communities. Some of those things will be decided on by the task force, you know, who those key communities are, whether it's, you know, a certain age range, a certain part of town that we don't communicate with effectively, or we don't talk to them enough, and figure out how we reach the members of those communities. And then, of course, after all that, it's compiling all that, analyzing it, and coming up with some concrete steps that we can take in the future to improve what we currently do. Because the city does a lot of communicating, we talk to a lot of people, but there's always more that can be done. And we're relying on a lot of that feedback to tell us, you know, here are the next, you know, 10 things that we can do on a day-to-day basis that really helps us reach all of our community members. As far as communication goes, kind of our standard operating procedures. Right now, we have several city staff involved in communication. For the Police Department side, we have Sergeant Brett Ayers, who's also here today that can answer any questions, that does the Public Information Officer for the Police Department. Right now, I'm doing the PIO job for the city. And then we have our IT manager, Michael Donnell, who does kind of the technical side to make sure everything we put on the website actually works, and making sure that all of our communication tools work and all the technology works when I mess something up. Thankfully, we are in the process of hiring a permanent city PIO, thanks to council for approving that. We opened the job yesterday and already have two applicants, which is very, very exciting. So, we're hoping to hire a person that will be in charge of taking all of these task force recommendations, you know, working with our task force, any other input we get, and then kind of making those things into reality. So, we are very excited about that. I also have listed our forums of communication. Right now, on social media, we do Facebook, Instagram, and Nextdoor. The kids tell me that TikTok is the way to go, but I haven't quite got that far because I don't want to dance on social media right now. We also have an online presence with our city website. We do the traditional newspaper, radio, TV. Granted, some of our newspapers don't come out daily like they used to, but also, if we send things in the newspapers, they do post it to their social media almost immediately. So, we still send it to them on a regular basis. And then also, we have our two apps, our NACWise Alerts and our NAC311 system. Like I mentioned, NACWise Alerts is really the way the city gets emergency alerts out to the community. You go and sign up, and Michael Donnell will give us a demonstration on how to do that in a minute. But those are alerts for things like winter storms, boil water notices. We use it a lot during hurricane season to update people in the most timely manner. We also have NAC311, which is our app where the community can communicate directly with city staff. If there's a pothole in your neighborhood, you can go take a picture of it, it will geotag where you are, and you say there's a pothole at this street. The great thing about it is it sends it to the city department. Even if you pick the wrong one on the app, if you set a pothole and you assigned it to the Police Department on your app, on your side, we can redirect it to the correct department. Also, on the back end, after about three days, if your city staff hasn't done anything, it pings us repeatedly saying you have not addressed this. It usually does not get to three days because we're all pretty responsive. But we also can really communicate with the citizens because we can say, your pothole will be fixed Tuesday. We come out and fix it Tuesday, and we can take a picture and say, we fixed your pothole. So, we actually use that quite a lot, we even use it internally. If Brian, Ray, and I are driving through the parks and we see an issue in the parks, we can report it to our park screw that way, so it's just an internal thing we use as well. So, of course, this is, like I said, what we currently do. I do expect once the task force is kind of finished with their information gathering, making their recommendations, we will have a lot of changes to how we currently communicate. A lot of improvements, you know, maybe things that are those easy wins, or maybe large overhauls of our communication strategy. But this is what we currently do. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And of course, Michael Donnell will also give us an update or a visual on how to sign up for NACWise Alerts, because I know that's kind of the forefront of everybody's mind since we are getting into winter weather. I think we're all still a little worried after that winter snowstorm a few years ago. So, we do want to make sure everyone knows how to do these NACWise Alerts as well. So, I'm happy to answer any question after public comment.
Okay. Is there any comment from the public? Questions, any questions for, counseling questions for Jessica before Michael makes his presentation?
I have several questions, but I'm going to wait until after the presentation.
Hey, Michael Donnell, you're IT manager, I was wanting to give you a quick rundown of how easy it is to do these emergency alert signups real fast, if you'll bear with me. So, you've got two quick ways to get here, the first is just go to our website, if you know that address, nacttx.us. There's also kind of a neat, nacwise.com that you can also go to, that'll go straight to it. But once you get to our city webpage, go down just a little bit here. Row of buttons there on the right-hand side, you have alert signup. There's a little bit of just general information, but the idea with this signup page is that it is supposed to be very simple, very straightforward, and incredibly easy because, you know, it should not be difficult to sign up for an emergency alert. So, the first thing that's presented to you when you scroll down a little bit, it's going to ask you for your municipality, because we are in a joint venture with the county to do this for our entire community, city and county. You need to know where you're at so that it can find your street address. We're in Nacogdoches, so we're going to pick that. Next thing you're going to do is pick and find your street. So, hey, we're on East Pillar Street. We're at 202. Put in your zip code. Now, the zip code's important because even though, you know, you can go here and sign up, if you try to put in a zip code that they don't cover, it's not going to allow you to, you know, get your notifications. Now, it is going to ask for your name. Just fill that out, that's needed so that it just stores it in the system, but, you know, it's nothing that we'll have access to. Now, you do have an option here, I want to point out. Right now, we have two languages of choice so that when you do your signup, you can tell it, I prefer English or Spanish, or both. And then, what's going to happen is when we do send it out an alert, if you have chosen Spanish as your primary language, then when that alert goes out, it's going to put that in Spanish, be it text messages, email, or the phone call that it makes. If you have any special needs that can flag that, I'm not sure where we would use that specifically, though. Next thing, and this is the final thing, is how do you want to have us communicate with you for these emergency alerts? There's a lot of options here. Whenever you click here, you can choose, I want this to be my cellphone, mobile phone, I want this to be my landline, I want this to be email, TDD, TTY. So, if you, you know, use those devices, it will come across those machines. And then you simply fill out that information. So, let's go ahead and put in a phone number. And if this happens to be a cellphone, you have a couple more choices here. You can choose to either get the voice message only, you can do text messages only, or you can do both. I'll just say both. And then one final thing to point out before you wrap this up, we also have a partnership, city and county, with National Weather Service so that if there is, you know, danger to life and safety due to inclement weather, in this particular case, we're signed up for tornado alerts, this is also going to push to your cellphone. When Freeport sends out their messages from National Weather Service, it'll hit the cellphone towers and it'll notify you while you're, you know, in town and on the systems too. So, probably going to want to turn that on as well. And then also tell it, you want voice, text, message, or both. And at that point, you hit submit and you go. And then when you're done, it says, great, you signed up, congratulations. You have two more things you can do here to finish this out. You're done, is, you know, if you want to at this point, but if you go to the bottom down here and fill out an email address and put in a password, you can come back later and update more information. So, you might want to watch multiple streets, say, if you're interested in water breaks because you've got family members that you have to take care of and you need to be responsible for those folks. You can also say, okay, well, I know I've signed up and I live on this street, but I got to take care of my mom on that street too. So, you can put that in there and have additional notifications should you desire. There's also an app that you can put on your phone. When you go download the app, it doesn't get specific with an account, you simply put in an area that you're interested in, and it will get emergency alerts. Now, where the app could be extremely useful, if you're a parent or a guardian of someone who lives in town, but you're in another location, you're not necessarily going to get these notifications because it's, you know, in our jurisdiction here. But if you use this app and say, wait a minute, I want to follow North Street, well, if something happens on North Street and you've got the app on your phone, you can live in Houston and still get a notification, you know, that something's going on in town. You know, I can especially see that being helpful if you're a parent and you're worried, hey, there's bad weather coming in, I want to see when something happens so we can, you know, talk to the kiddos and stuff. Now, we've done a lot of this on the computer right now, but what if you don't have access to a computer? What if you don't care to use a computer? What if you don't care to have a cellphone with apps and stuff? Turns out, there's a number, and I'm going to read it for those watching on TV. If you call 936-715-3322 and follow the prompts, it's going to ask you the same questions that it just did us right here on the web. It does it through your telephone, so you don't have to have a smartphone or anything, you can have a traditional phone, and then it will sign you up for those emergency alerts as well. And that is pretty much it, and we'll answer questions.
Any questions from Michael?
I have a couple, just for Michael, not for, so maybe while you're here. On the languages, are there any plans to add more languages?
It has been discussed, and it is an option. I think that the best bet would be to identify those with the community and then figure out which ones we want to add in there. There are multiples, so that is definitely an option. I suspect that our Communications Committee would give us direction on that.
I would like to suggest working with NISD for that because they have a good sense of the different languages that people in our community speak. The special needs part, sorry. Was that referring to like if you need, it said special assistance and like evacuation or something, so?
I apologize, I'm not super familiar with that option, but my assumption would be that if you flagged that, then we'll know that if someone needs help getting out of an area, we'll be aware of that.
It feels like that would be important to be sure about. So, if, yeah, if you could just, if you wouldn't mind just making sure just to see. Because I wouldn't want somebody to like sign up for this and be homebound and then use it and not be able to get the benefit of it. Maybe another task for the communications, but the landline number that you gave, how else, if in any way, is the city communicating that? Landline number to the public, like if they can't sign up on the internet or on their phones?
I do know that we put that out in our initial social media stuff when we signed up. From that point forward, though, I could not speak to that unfortunately.
So, one of the things the Communication Task Force was also looking at is what information can we regularly put in our water bill inserts? Because, of course, if you live in Nacogdoches, you're paying your water bill, you get that water bill every time. So, they are identifying things like that phone number, NACWise signups, the website, things like that to put on that water bill insert. So, we're looking at that right now. And then, of course, they have mentioned, you know, we need to start doing regular ads in the Daily Sentinel and Alingua, and places like that where you put the ad talking about NACWise and have the phone number on there with it.
Great.
Oh, excuse me, on the water bill insert?
Yes, sir.
A lot of us have automatic pay, and we never look at a water bill.
Absolutely, and one of the things with the water bill inserts and the ads and things like that, it's not going to be one-size-fits-all. I know water bill inserts are going to miss some people, but they're going to hit others. Same things with Daily Sentinel ads, we're going to get some people but not others. So, we're going to try to do as broad of an approach as we can, but we know that we are going to miss someone, and we're also going to work on some of our messaging being, you know, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, make sure that some of our pastors and church congregations know, you know, our SFA professors, do they know about it, and can they tell their students? So, a lot of it's going to be kind of old-fashioned, like tell your neighbors and your friends and your family, and then try to go some of those other communication routes, so hopefully, we can reach everybody at some point.
Is that through the focus group, communication focus group, community focus groups?
Yes, so with the task force, they're wanting to reach out to some of those key communities, whether it's a certain age demographic, a certain portion of town, large church congregations, large employers, and talk to them about how can we get the message to you, and then you can get the message out to kind of your communities. So, that is one of the things they're going to be discussing.
Is there any way to test the system and determine if you reached the majority of the citizens?
Yes, so with, I'll let you tackle that one, that's more the technical side.
Yes, sir, if we put out a notice to the public, we could test the system and send out just a, you know, a very brief, this is a test of our emergency communication system. And if we specify the date and time, then you could let us know if you didn't receive it for some reason.
But you wouldn't know how many people that you reached?
It will tell you in a report that it will say, you know, we called this many people, we sent this many emails, text messages, and as it rolls through, the default is if no one picks up, try again, and then leave a voicemail, but it will let you know in that report, you know, we did reach this many and someone picked up the phone and answered it, this is how many voicemails we left, or this is how many just went unanswered and it couldn't do anything. So, it will definitely show that.
Yeah, with a lot of the citizens living in rural areas, as to where mobile signal is weak, and they usually use a landline. And that would be, if you're doing a test, it would most likely be after workouts.
And one of the other things we're looking at is making sure that we do a lot of that messaging to get people to sign up, because if you signed up with a cellphone number 12 years ago, because we've had the system for quite a while, if you signed up 12 years ago and you have moved and changed your landline or gotten a new cellphone number, and you haven't gone and updated that information, then it just bounces back to us. So, a lot of it's going to be testing it, but then still pushing that information to get new residents to sign up, people that have changed their information. So, it's kind of a constant struggle that, you know, as soon as we get good information, some other information is now bad. So, it's going to be a lot of that messaging all the time.
Is there anything else?
I had some questions for Jessica about the task force part.
Anything else for Mr. Donnell?
I think I do have a couple of questions, which may be really detail-oriented, and I apologize for not bringing this to you sooner, but this discussion has brought it to my mind. How many people are signed up within the city for this service?
So, that question has two answers, and I unfortunately don't know the specifics on either for you, but I will say that the two methods we have, there's the voluntary signup. That's primarily to grab the folks who just are not on the radar at all or have only operated with cellphones this entire time. The primary database that's in the system right now is information that we got from DETCOG of all of the 911 addresses that were on file with the county. So, the database is at least full of that right now. So, if you've officially registered at a street address, whatever number you put on record there is the first number that we have on file. But like I said, it's very important that we push out for the individual signups because there is inevitably going to be folks who just, you know, flew in under the radar and they need to be shown, you know, hey, we don't necessarily have your information, so please come sign up so you can, you know, fill out in the database too.
And that really leads me to my second question, which is kind of, to piggyback on what Councilmember Fisher said, is that, you know, there are, who are the subsets of people that we're missing with our traditional targets? If you're using a landline, the chances that you see this on social media are probably zero.
And I will say, sorry to interrupt, but that is definitely one of the primary focuses that I am aware of that the Communications Committee has given us help on, is identify those areas where we're deficient, help us, you know, fill in those gaps where we can.
And this is not a question, this is a point for our city staff. This is a critical piece of our communications. I mean, in the event of an emergency, we have to be able to reach everyone. I mean, if they have a means of being communicated to, we have to figure out a way to get that gap down to as close to zero as we possibly can. And I'm sure there are more details on how we can reach those groups, and I'm certainly open to trying to throw ideas against the wall and see what sticks. But figuring out who we're reaching now has to be part of our discussion also. That's all I've got right now.
I have several questions for you.
Okay.
So, what is your guess about the percent of the population of the city who now has signed up for NACWise Alerts? Give me a guess. It can be a range too, but is it?
We probably, I'll throw out a number of maybe like 10 to 20% of people who've probably voluntarily gone, and then, you know, the stuff that we pulled in, don't know any specific numbers, but the 911 DETCOG data, you know, will grab quite a lot of registered, you know, people who were in the 911 system.
Okay, so we've had this system since June, is that correct? I think that's correct, June of 2022.
We went live with this, I believe, I want to say it was closer to February and March.
I was just looking on a KTRE news.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it said June, I mean, that was what. So, how many alerts have you sent out since then?
Me personally, maybe one or two, but I know that we have sent out quite a few for water breaks and I believe for street closure notices whenever we were doing street repairs. So, if I had to ballpark it, I'd say there's probably been maybe 10 or 15 total throughout this year that we've sent.
Part of the reason I'm asking this because I guess I'm not on it because I haven't gotten any alerts.
I think it would probably be, I know it would be very dependent on where you live and what the nature was. The ones that I'm aware of, we haven't had any like mass emergency notifications. These have been very targeted, like boil water notices and things. So, unless there was something going on on your street with a repair or a water break where you had a boil notice, you wouldn't have seen this necessarily.
I've not signed up for it, so I mean, would I be on if I'm not signed?
That's, that's, that's the, that's, that's the reason we need to push this, because if you don't have a number that's on file with that initial data dump with nine one one, then you definitely need to get a voluntary signup into the system so that we have a record of you to call. And that's where we honestly would probably need help from even council as, you know, you're out and about with constituents, you know, help us by letting them know, hey, this is available and just, you know, help keep that conversation going, so that this is always, you know, in the citizens' minds that, hey, I, I need to go sign up for that service.
So, so it seems like there are two pieces to at least the emergency. One is getting the information to the emergency, how, who releases it? Who does that? What's the mechanism? Do you do it? Do you do it?
It's currently PIO and I'm backup when, when they're not available, Public Information Officer, or Jessica.
That's you, Jessica, right, cause we don't have a, I mean, you have other work to do, right? But you are the acting, so, sorry, I may have more questions.
Just so right now with emergency releases, um, if it's something, um, like a boil water notice, um, or street repair or some other emergency, uh, the way we operate is that whatever department handles that gets the information to me, and then I get the information into our NACWIS system. Um, usually Michael helps me with it, cause I'm not super tech savvy, um, to make sure that we're geo fencing the correct area, cause if it's a water main break, you know, on Park Street. But you live on the complete north end of town, you're not gonna get a boil water notice because it doesn't affect you. Um, and we don't want everyone in town boiling their water and, you know, worrying about that, um, and so we geolocate all that. So right now, if there's an emergency in different departments, um, they get it to the PIO and then I disseminate that information, depending on if it's a NACWIS alert, if it's just a Facebook or next door post, um, so I try to get it out the best I can. Um, if it's smaller things like the library's having an event, um, they write up their press release, do all their social media and they just copy me on that, so that way I kinda know what information went out there, but they have very, you know, trusty sources in the media and they send out the press releases pretty often. Um, so it's two different modes, depending on if it's an emergency or, you know, something that needs immediate attention, or if it's like an event.
So press releases, uh, I, I'm sorry, could you, so the press releases go in a different format than this? And do you, are you responsible for those also, or how does that go?
Um, some of them, yes, if it is a press release, it has something to do with a, a boil water notice, where we have to let T C Q know and let the public know in a certain amount of time, um, our Public Works Department writes those up, and then I help push it out to the media. Um, if it's something like the library's having, um, I know this Saturday's a Dogman birthday party, um, which is a big thing for elementary schools, it's a, it's a book character. Um, if they're having some library event, they'll write that press release, um, and send it out to their media partners. Um, and so that's kinda how we do it right now. Um, as far as the writing of the press releases and the content, that's the responsibility of the individual department, um, because I'm not gonna try to wa- write something about a water or boil water notice, because I don't have the technical skills, um, for that. They know the specifications and what has to be reported.
So, so we have two problems, one is getting it to the system and then the other is getting it from the system to all the people, correct? And right now, we don't have very many people who are, who probably we don't have, I mean, I'm assuming we don't have most of the citizens signed up to get NACWIS alerts, that's my guess, because I, I guess we're not on, has anybody gotten any, I mean, just?
I'm signed up now, so if one happens after, after right now, I'm.
No, but I mean, not till then, I'm trying to get a gauge on, on where we are, like if, if all of a sudden we have a, a tornado that's coming through next week, how are we right now? That, that's a big concern to me.
Look at the system tomorrow and see if I can get you some hard numbers and email that to the.
As far as the council, yeah.
Signed up? And also if we need to know how to sign up on DETCOC's nine one one, I mean, maybe, I mean, I may, may not be signed up on that, that would be really helpful. But, but then the other thing is how it gets to this system and also communications in general, how they get out to the public. Um, I think it's really helpful that we are doing a thorough assessment. I would have, oh, you know, when we started this, uh, you know, a year ago, we, I was thinking, oh, we could do a really pretty quick assessment, and, uh, what, I, I'm just.
Yes, ma'am, and part of that has been, uh, communication and the Public Information Officer position for the city has always been kind of a part-time position. Um, in the past, it's been the main street and communication person, main street and PIO person. Um, but now with obviously such a need for communication, um, so many great things going on in our city now, um, with council's blessing, we are hiring a full-time PIO, so that way it's someone's full-time job to do this. Um, and of course, we had a staff person leave and I got to take over the task force and kinda, um, get them rolling, um, and we've made some great strides. Um, so a lot of it's been just that communications was kind of a, a part-time position and then losing a person and then kinda picking up where we left off. Um, so I am excited about the progress we've made, um, and excited about the prospect of hiring a full-time Public Information Officer, which I think will really help. Um, so that way we can establish what these concrete steps are we need to make, what these recommendations are, and just kinda make it our standard mode of, here's how we communicate, and it's also gonna be part of that person's op- or job to figure out how we get people signed up for NACWIS, make sure we're promoting it all the time. Um, and then keep up with, you know, trends nationwide, you know, is there a better way to communicate with people? Is there something new that came out that we can start using? Um, so to have someone else that can kinda look at that and that'd be their full-time mission for the city.
Um, I have some other questions for Mr. Canizares, I sent you some ahead at time, I think, I asked you. Unless other people.
Anybody else, anything?
I have more questions for Jessica.
Okay, we'll come back.
The action items that you went through and the next steps, did the task force come up with those?
Um, those were based off of, um, city council's original kinda marching orders for this group was, you know, to interview, um, key communities and commu- and, um, communication partners, uh, but then the task force figured out how to do those things. And that's where the one-on-one interviews and the focus groups came from.
Okay.
Rather than just do it, cause we talked about doing, um, a survey initially, um, but we still kinda said if we put out a survey on Facebook or the website and people don't know to go to our Facebook or website, we're still missing them. Um, so the idea was to figure out who we're missing, how to communicate with them before we start doing, you know, surveys or anything of that nature.
Okay, um. When you were discussing, um, next steps, you, um, made a comment about the task force trying to figure out what communities are usually left out of communications and how we reach them. Um, and so my question has to do with the interplay, I guess, between that community, um, the, or the committee charge, um, with communication, and separately, community engagement, um, because I think that while those things are interrelated and there is some overlap, they are significantly different, such that a communications task force being charged with a community engagement, um, type action item is concerning to me.
Okay.
So, I guess, in the form of a question, um, have you guys thought about that interplay? Do you feel like there is some movement into the community engagement? Because my sense of it is while the community engagement piece is certainly, um, important and something that we are, um, lacking severely, um, I think that that has to be a separate initiative altogether.
And I agree, um, I think for a lot of the, the outreach to key communities, it's more of, are you hearing what we're saying? Type thing, if we put out a press release, if we do a boil water notice, if we're having a program at the library, you know, do you hear from the city at all? Um, and it's more of trying to gauge how people communicate, um, whether it's a, a certain age bracket that, I don't go to the city website because they don't do a website, but they'll follow us on Instagram or Nextdoor. So it's more identifying how they can hear from us. Um, I do think engagement's very different, um, I think the task force, really their main goal is to figure out how we get messages to people, uh, but not necessarily what message to give them, um, unless it's, you know, emergencies, cause we all need to hear about those. Um, but so a lot of it's just how, how do people hear from us and how do we make sure they're hearing information we're putting out? Um, but I do agree, engagement is a little different.
Thank you.
Absolutely. That's all I have.
So this is kind of a broad question, so I'm sorry for asking it in this way. You're saying we've gotta communicate with our residents in the event of an emergency, and I completely agree. But do we have a collective vision for what an emergency is?
So for that, I don't know if I'm the best person to answer that, um, we do have Chief Kiplinger who is here, they can talk more about kind of what an emergency is. So far with NACWIS alerts, we've kept it to boil water notices, um, major street repairs, um, and essentially weather emergencies, um, things like hurricanes, winter weather, things of that nature. So that's what we've done so far with NACWIS, um, as far as what an emergency is. But as far as the broad scope of that, Chief Kiplinger may be able to answer that better than I could.
But there is a difference between emergency and alerts, quite a big difference.
Yes, there is, um, and so a lot of the, the emergency things, you know, come out pretty quickly. We do do, um, if there's like hurricanes coming, you know, we have advance notices of those. Um, so we put out that alert that, you know, we have winter weather coming, hurricanes coming, things we have advance notice of, and then other things come out rather quickly, like there's a water main break, boil water notice, it all has to be done in a very timely manner. Are you standing right behind me?
So, uh, so just to clarify a little bit about the, the NACWIS Alert Emergency Communication System, the reason that we switched to this platform is it allows us to use FEMA's IPAW system. Uh, that's the Integrated Public Alert Warning System. Uh, the IPAW system will actually capture everyone that's on our cell towers. So if you're from out of town and you are pinging on a Nacogdoches cellphone tower and we issue the alert, you'll receive the alert, which is gonna catch our college students largely. Um, the other thing is that the nine one one data from DETCOC includes all of the White Pages phone numbers. So if you have a phone number that's listed in the phone book, like in the olden days, um, those phone numbers are all included. The reason we got that from nine one one and DETCOC is because it, it allowed better geolocation with regard to addresses than simply the phone book. And so our old system grabbed the phone book data from the phone company, but it had an address and it, it got kinda complicated to find, to make sure that we could really pinpoint where those folks were. And the DETCOC data has geolocations that enable us with a latitude and longitude to identify where those people are. So, so to answer your question, no, a lot of people haven't signed up and we need to do a better job of getting people to sign up. Uh, but if we issue a disaster alert, uh, a tornado warning or whatever, it should come through, uh, through the FEMA system, uh, through the cellphone towers, and every landline should be included. Uh, we use the system a lot in the fire department, we, that's how we notify our firefighters when we need people to come in off duty. So we probably use it two or three times a week, um, and it works great, it works fine. So everybody's loaded in the system and, and they get a text, an email, my phone blows up at three in the morning that says, things are on fire, you need to wake up. And so, so that's a little bit of clarity. Now with regard to when an emergency notification is sent in a general sense, uh, those emergency notifications are sent when people need to take an action. Uh, and so we have used our emergency alert system when we had, uh, a suspect running from the police that was believed to be armed and dangerous, and we identified a polygon of streets in the neighborhood where he was believed to be, and we notified everybody within that section. Um, we have used it with hazardous material spills to notify people within a, a diameter or a range, um, that they need to stay inside. Um, and we've used it for a number of, we've used it for a number of those types of events, uh, over the last twelve or thirteen years that we've had a system, and able to do a lockdown. Hey, the, this section of town needs to, to stay indoors and lock your doors because something bad's happening, um, or this group needs to evacuate. So this system should allow us to move further ahead. It took us longer than we expected to get the FEMA, uh, Alert Warning System approved, um, for us to be able to access that system. Um, and it took us longer than we expected to get the DETCOC nine one one data, but all of that, all of that is there and, and should be working. So when do we, who makes the decision? Generally speaking, whoever the police or fire incident commander is at an event. We have multiple emergencies a day, and when we say emergency, I think, I think it bleeds over to disaster, but if you break your arm, it's an emergency in your world, um, and we're gonna be there. Um, if it's, uh, if it's, uh, uh, somebody that's barricaded in a house, the police are there for that emergency event. And so, so the police sergeant or lieutenant, the fire battalion chief or captain that's on duty could make a determination to make, uh, to make an emergency call and dispatch has the capability of doing that calling as well. Um, if it's a hurricane or a major disaster, or something big that we need to alert people to, um, then we would really route that through, through Jessica to try to make sure that our message stays consistent all the way across the board. Um, and we need one Public Information Officer in a large event that communicates police information, medical information, fire information. And so I think it's, I think there's a lot of pieces to this. Um, uh, so did I answer your question? I, I went a long way to get the short distance.
No, that, that's really the answer I wanted, because I was hoping that we would, we could get to the point where we were discussing the, the suspect that was on the loose a, a few weeks ago, because it, the geolocation of that was, was important to me. How close are we to this? How big, how do you determine how big your polygon is or your, your radius? How do you make that determination? What is too close, what's? Because, you know, the person that, who, whose vehicle was stolen is the person that cuts my hair. So, I mean, I mean, the community is small enough that we know people that are involved in these things. And so how do you decide who gets it, who doesn't? I mean, I'm at Chili's when I get the press release from the city, but how do we, how do we get communicated with those things? Just, just a general question.
So, so I, I will tell you that, that our most common public notification in fire will be hazardous material spills. And so we will look in our hazardous materials books for a spill of ethylmethyl bad stuff, um, and it, and based on the size of the spill and the nature of what's going on, um, that's kind of a predetermined range. So it may be evacuate everybody within five hundred feet or, or shelter in place. And so we, we rely on, on technology and those that have gone before us on how far we need those ranges to be. So it's as simple as dropping a pin at the spill and dragging it out two hundred feet and with a big circle. Um, if it's a law enforcement event, more likely it's gonna be a polygon with squared off corners that identify neighborhoods or areas of, of concern, um, that that, that, that police commander could, could identify. Um, again, we use it often, if, if the battalion chief right now pulls up at a, an apartment fire and realizes we need more people, he's simply gonna get on the radio and call dispatch and say, notify all the off-duty firefighters, we need them to come in. And so that happens really quickly.
Excellent, thank you.
But if you had a spill and then you wanna clear a, a mile radius, how effective are we today as far as using a system to notify people through their cellphone? Probably not very effective? Uh, it, well, it's gonna, right, unless you're signed up, it's not gonna come to your cellphone. Um, but it's gonna hit all those landlines, and so we're gonna catch all those people that, that still have a, a, a traditional telephone. And so it is important that we, that we, uh, that we get more people to sign up. There's no, there's no phone book of cellphones, there's no phone book out there that has your cellphone number. Uh, Mr. Canizares has a, a different area code than we do, because he didn't change phone numbers, uh, when he moved here. Uh, it took me three years to get off my two eight one number when I moved back from Houston, because I, I had too many people calling me still, so. Um, and so people do move around and people are portable, so there's no phone book, you can't just go to AT&T and say, give us all the cell numbers. It doesn't really work that way. Uh, my wife's Aunt Judy is eighty-four or eighty-five, and she has a cellphone with a Nacogdoches phone number, because she has a benevolent nephew. So, does that, does that sorta make sense? So we need to get people to sign up. Um, we did, when we initially did this about twelve years ago, we did a big push for NACWIS. We had magnets and we had flyers and we did a big push and it was at every community event and festival. We trained all the librarians on how to sign people up, so if you don't have, uh, computer savvy, you don't have a cellphone, anybody can go to the library and Mercedes and her team will one hundred percent, uh, take the time to stop and sign them up, sign their friends up. Uh, we really pushed that out and we didn't get a great response, we just really didn't.
Was that on this new system or the old system?
This is the old system, but, but again, it was, it, they're, they're not disparate, the new system just does more things and it's easier for, the interface is easier for us to operate. And that's why we ch- converted.
And we weren't able to upload the, uh, last numbers from the old system into this system, I assume?
So, no ma'am, we were not, uh, the data that was initially imported, we technically did not own, because that was the stuff that they sold that were like you discussed, the original White Pages. And when we went to export our data, they gave us our data all right, but it turns out, nobody signed up with the old system at all. There was maybe a thousand folks total, and of that one thousand, I believe nine hundred and sixty to nine eighty were strictly, I want the weather alerts, and they did not provide, uh, name, address or anything, so it just, it just pushed those. So, um, short answer to your question was, unfortunately, there was no good data to import, so there was nothing for us to grab.
So.
Go ahead. Anything else for, uh, chief? Anybody?
I, I still have, so, well, let me ask you this, was that last, um, that last suspect, uh, you know, who was being chased?
I, I don't know, so you're gonna have to tell me.
See, on the, um, I, I think, I was told by a constituent that there was a, um, and this. and this may be the one that you, you got the news release on. Yeah, yeah, and I got a news release on, on Monday. That there, that somebody had broken free and there was a chase or something. That, was that on the alert system or not?
I don't know because he was apprehended in Garrison, I believe. And so, I don't know if they, if the county used the system or not.
Mr. Canizares, student?
Sergeant.
So, I, I think he was.
We'll, we'll get Chief Williams to check on that.
I think he escaped at the police department, right? And the, the, anyway, sorry. There we go.
Thank you, Brett.
Sorry. Don't know who I'm asking the question to, but I have more questions, but.
Hello, Sergeant Brett Ayers. So, the individual that you're referring to, he did escape, but he was not in our custody. He was in another law enforcement agency's custody at the time. He did escape from the west side of the police department, on the outside. He was in a, one of their police vehicles. And we did assist them immediately with trying to re-apprehend him. And we did set up a perimeter and, and I did send out a Facebook notification immediately upon being notified that we had an escapee. And, and of course, followed that up with a press release sent out to all the different news outlets, trying to push that information out to, is many of the different media outlets that we have to try to get this information out to the, to the public. Now, as far as the, the alert system, I don't know if that was, if that was utilized or not, but we can certainly check, check on that. And, and then he did break our perimeter. And, and he did steal a vehicle and he ended up in Garrison. And we assisted with that also.
I, I, I need to remind council that we have an item posted on the agenda and following up on individual items that you've heard about in the news is not one of them. So.
I'm, I'm asking about communications. I'm asking.
I, I understand that there is a connection that launched you into individual specifics. Please don't get into specifics about specific instances here unless it is related to the communication aspect of it. Following up on what was going on with an escaped, an escaped prisoner.
If it was on the NACWise alert system.
And the answer was, you don't know. Correct.
The answer is, no, we did not utilize it at that time.
And, and part of, part of my question is, I, I think, and it's actually for you, Mr. Canizares. So, so if I, am I, I have a few questions. So, sorry. Thank you so much. Appreciate answering. So, so my, my biggest question is that I feel responsible. We are responsible, all of us sitting right here, including you and the, the six of us, are responsible for what happens to people in an emergency. And we're responsible right now. So I'm very worried that, and when, when responsibility is out in, in all the different departments, I, I'm hoping that the police are concentrating on apprehending people. I'm really hoping you do that first. But, but somehow, we need some kind of centralized, making sure that real emergencies, if we have a dangerous criminal out there, we have to now be able to get information to the people who might be in danger. And I think, I, I think people were in danger at that point. And, and I know there are fire dangers and I know there are spills and I know there are water dangers. And I know getting a person will help a lot. But it, it's us, it's us who have to make sure that, that we, if, if we have a tornado or maybe a tornado and some emergencies that have, have to do with the police, that this is a huge task. And, and for, I'm worried when I hear this person and this person and that person and this person. And people have to make their own individual calls and then have to worry about communications when they're, it, it concerns me a lot. So here's my question. Do you feel good about it right now, about how, where our communications are? And I, I'm not talking about the committee or anything else, but where we are right now?
Well, there's always room for improvement. Like I told you as part of my review, that, you know, it's time, just based on everything that's going on, all the activities happening in our community, it's time to reassess and hire, excuse me, a public information officer. And so, that's what we're looking to doing. As, as mentioned just a minute ago, Ms., Ms. Sal mentioned that it's been posted as of yesterday. And so, we do need to have that centralized location. It was, it was, it was divided up into sort of a part-time position. And so, we're at a point now that we need to up our efforts. And so, am I happy with it? Well, I think we're doing okay, but we can always do better. And, and I've worked in a number of different organizations that have full staffs of PIOs and there are things that are going to get dropped because just we can't reach everybody. And that's, and unfortunately, that's just the case as it is, but we can always do better. I mean, I've counted, just kind of roughly counted, I counted thirty-five heads, head count today. We should not leave this room without signing up for that NACWise alert. But, 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 but hold on. But so, so we need to continue to push it. And so, whether we do it at various civic organizations, at your ward meetings, at Rotary Clubs, at, that certainly at a, you know, we could do a program at the senior center to just allow people, especially help them if they can't do it themselves. We can either teach some of the staff how to do it and do a program. We could easily do that. We'd be happy to go do that. But we are, we do need to make a concerted effort to push these things. But we're pushing a lot of communications about not just NACWise, but about events, about activities, about closures. We push a lot and, you know, and, and certainly, we can always increase the quantity. But sometimes you also have to think about the quality of the, of the communications. Because what you don't want is a cry wolf syndrome where you just push stuff and they just ignore you. As Chief Kiplinger mentioned, when we received that first system, whatever it was called back, back then, Blackboard, if the city made a concerted effort to signups and do signups and push and very few people did it, well, we need to re, we need to re-engage those efforts and we can certainly do better.
So, we used to, five years ago, have a very good system of communications. We, the city had a great system of communications. And we did have a, a, a public information officer. They did a really good job. And that, this was my highest priority when I came into office. And that's why I asked specifically, let's get a committee, not, not to do the job of the city, but to support it. But I would really appreciate if at our next city council meeting, if we had a very specific report about what is going to be on NACWise, what, how it gets to the central location to get on NACWise. So we know if, if, if it's a police situation, if it's a, a, a weather situation. I think we, it's our job. If, if, if somebody got killed, I would feel responsible because, because we are the ones who have to make sure that people know. And if, and so, the, how the communication gets to whatever system we're going to use and we can't depend on Facebook and we can't depend on how the information gets to us and then what we're going to do with it, both, both for the public, but also for council. You know, or is emails the way we're, we're informing council? Or, or texts or, I mean, do.
I, I think it's really up to you all. What is it that you all want? I mean, you all get things in different manners. I mean, I know when we've had major police incidents, especially in a respective area, I call you. And I know I've called you because we've spoken when we had some major incidents in the past, specifically in, in your ward because of just the issue that the person may be on a lamb. So we've, I've contacted you directly to be able to just give you a heads up that something's happening.
Yep, so if we could have this in writing so we know what, what's going to happen and how the channel of communication goes. I think it would just be very helpful for all of us.
And we can certainly try to put some of those things, but you know, we're not going to have every single scenario. And we're going to have to make adjustments on the fly. And, and there will be situations where, because we do have all hands on deck, that sometimes the communication may not necessarily, there may be some latency as far as the communication.
But, but anyway, both, I, I think it would be very helpful if we had the system. In fact, maybe you didn't get the email I was asking if maybe that could be clarified, both for communications to council and communications to, and it doesn't have to be individual. I mean, you could send texts and, and emails or, or whatever to all of us.
Well, if, if we're going to work on a communications with, with council, I, I really would rather have a collective workshop with the council because having me just bring you my thoughts, I don't think is necessarily productive because I'm going to miss something. I, I need to get an understanding of your preferences, what are your expectations? How much of communications do you want? I mean, we do something every, every Friday and the Friday update. And, and I don't know if it's effective to you or not. And I know it's not necessarily emergency. It's just run-of-the-mill activities. And I don't know if that's effective. But if we're going to have that conversation, I would rather it not just be on a Tuesday. I think it's a much deeper conversation with the level of communications between my office and the council because sometimes it's individual, sometimes it's a collective whole. It may be, hey, this is a major emergency. I need, I need to contact you individually. It just runs the gamut. So I, I want to make sure that it's a, it's a much more holistic conversation than just me giving you a bullet list. That would be my preference.
I, I've got a question. What happened five years ago? Y'all, you guys were here. What, what happened that changed?
We had a public information officer. We had a system where things, where people were notified.
What was, what was, I think it would be helpful for the task force in part, but like what was so good about it?
I don't remember that.
We got, I mean, we got notifications in the city. So the people on the task force can tell you too. So is there any?
Chief, do you remember it?
I think it may have been that we had an excellent public communications officer.
I don't even remember that.
Mahaffey?
Yes, Amy, Amy Mahaffey.
I don't remember, I just don't remember a significant difference between what's going on now and what was going on five years ago.
I asked several people and that's what they said, but I can't, I'll get more details for you if you want.
But that is our goal.
But if we could.
That is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Hiring a public information officer, we're hoping to consolidate a lot of this communication under one office and have them be responsible for making sure that these are consolidated, right? I mean, that's.
I mean, absolutely. I mean, that, that's part of the effort is, is to try to take those, those duties that have been disseminated into the organization and try to centralize those into basically a point of contact. And, and even though that may be overwhelming, that individual, but again, it's, it's at least have a, a point where there's a source. And if the situation, whatever the case may be, is so overwhelming, at least you still have a point. But it's going to require reinforcements.
Right.
Because me, we, we may have to rely on, on the county. We may have to rely on the school district. We may have to rely on other sources too, just to be able to facilitate or even outside assistance because it's just beyond us if we have a major calamity that requires national attention. It just may be beyond our, our, our expertise. And so, I, I think it's having it, but at least having that point of contact is critical for our efforts. And so, like I said, I, I'd be happy to have that conversation about what are the expectations. But is it, to me, I, I think I'd rather have a dedicated discussion as to what are your expectations of us and how much and what level and how deep you want to go into this.
And hopefully have our PIO on, on staff.
Right, and have that person on staff to be able to make sure that those protocols are put in place. And then we follow, follow through with those.
So, so until then, so I don't know how long. I don't know the qualifications that we're even talking about about the public information.
We email those to council, but we email the job description and the qualifications.
Okay, so I don't know how long it'll take. And until then, if we could have some idea, I'm worried because cold weather is, is sinking in and there's, there are a lot of issues that, that we could be facing. If we could just, it doesn't have to be a long thing, just an idea of who sends what to whom and how it gets there. And then, we can all do a push and I suggest a letter. Send out a letter to everybody, all, all addresses about this, this NACWise, you know, alert system. This is how you sign up. This is what we're going to tell you about. But I think we need to do it and not, and not wait even till we have that. But I, but I still would like to know.
Well, what, what, what we're working on, I've spoken to Chief Kiplinger. They are working on, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but on the tenth, or excuse me, the sixth of December, they are working on putting together sort of a, basically a, an overview of a community, or emergency management plan. So yeah, I don't think we'll go into every single annex, but, but certainly be able to kind of give you a few examples of how, you know, things would, 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 would come into play. But certainly, if there's a, a major calamity, as you described, the various kind of components, that information can be funneled to a central source regardless of the PIO position being on staff. I mean, we can still funnel that to an individual so it gets pushed out through that system. But again, the, the key is, the information can get out there. It's just a matter of who's getting it. So, I mean, if the emphasis that we need to have right now is, is signups, we can do that through a variety of ways. We can certainly, as you mentioned, council member is to send out letters or other pieces of communication, whether it's just an ongoing marketing push, we can continue doing that. But again, I, I reemphasize, we've got thirty-five or so people in this room. If you haven't signed up, sign up. It took all of thirty seconds to do. And, and again, any, any one of you, if you have constituent meetings coming up, encourage them to sign up. And, and we would be happy to help facilitate that as well through one-on-ones or group settings. I mean, obviously, the more the merrier, but, but we can absolutely share how to do that. We could certainly create screenshots with Mr. Donnell's work, create screenshots. That information can easily be sent out to some of these various civic organizations that have constant emails going back and forth. Twenty-one-seven comes to mind. They have a large distribution network. We can certainly send it to those folks and a host of others to get signups. I'm sorry.
So I do have the, the answer. I was trying to look at my notes. That the difference is, it was a priority. It was a higher priority than other staff positions or other, or whatever we do. The, the, the money was targeted to having information get out. And everybody knew that, that, that information and communications was one of the top priorities of the city in a central location, not just the position, but even all of us. So that, I think, maybe just thinking about it and, and setting this as a, a, a huge priority even prior to emergencies, I think, is, it's so easy to, for something like this to slip when we're doing so many other things. We're doing planning and we're doing, you know, but this has to be.
Yeah, communications is huge, no doubt.
I think we can always do better.
Sure.
Thank you. I didn't, I appreciate your, I appreciate the progress that's been made too. And I definitely will put on my Facebook page how to do it and the, the whole thing and appreciate it all.
So any other questions of me or staff on this? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will move on. Thank you, Jessica, also for your presentation. Michael, I'll move on to six C, hold a discussion, provide feedback regarding a policy and procedures for city staff to respond to low-income housing tax credit request. Economic Development Director.
Good evening, City Council. Loresa Philpott, you're Economic Development Director. This is the season for low-income housing tax credits to be sending in their requests for support soon. And so, we wanted to make sure that you have time to review a policy that essentially is just formalizing the process that we initiated last year. I'm not going to read every bit of these slides because it is literally just a recreation of the policy that you had already in your packets. But I wanted to make sure that we have the opportunity to ask questions and just discuss it so that we can, we can all learn about what the policy is and see if there's anything that we possibly have left out. The point of the policy is to communicate with the potential applicants that we may have and also make sure that the public is aware of the process that we're going to take. It also will set up the, the items that the council hopefully will utilize when they're analyzing the requests for support. And there's a list of those that we'll go over here in a minute. The point of the, of the policy is to establish, or the, the analysis in the policy is to establish, A, if the requests merit support. And then, B, if you have more than one request, help you prioritize those requests. Because typically, the way that TDHCA funding works, they typically only are going to fund just one from a community. So it makes sense to support one if you are supporting any. Also identifies myself and my staff as, as the point of contact for, for these developments. So the evaluation criteria, this essentially says that the city's support will be in the form of a resolution of support. The TDHCA criteria also provides additional assistance, or additional points to the applications if they receive financial assistance. That seems like a scary. if they receive financial assistance. That seems like a scary word, but it's typically two hundred and fifty dollars. And so, we can easily achieve that through a permit fee waiver, um, should you decide to do that. So, the criteria for evaluation, um, as I said, I'm not gonna read through these word by word, but, um, they typically are things that we discussed this time last year. Does it align with the existing zoning map? So, does the property as of the day that they are applying to you already have zoning, or maybe are they in the midst of a rezoning? Um, that became very important last year, and so we wanted to make sure that that's in there. Um, is it a rehabilitation of an existing structure? The only truly formal request I've received to date is, is for, um, a project that would renovate an existing tax credit property in Akatosh. So, it's no new units, just refreshing units that we already have. Um, involvement and support from local stakeholders and neighborhood organizations. One new thing that you'll see later in here is we are encouraging a neighborhood meeting, separate and apart from the other meetings that we had last year. So, getting any neighborhood organizations or local neighborhoods to support a, a potential request could, could play a factor in your decision-making. Um, the impact on existing housing, we discussed that last time. Is there, is there, um, a current need for, um, new affordable housing units, the quality and design of construction? The impact on city infrastructure and services, we talked about that. Um, are these, do these, um, developments put a strain on any particular public service where, where they are to be located? Um, are they providing both tax credit and market rate units? What did they ask for, really? Um, are they gonna pay property taxes? That came up last year. Sometimes these developers are nonprofit developers, which means they technically, um, would not be required to pay property taxes. Um, they, there are opportunities for them to make payments in lieu of taxes, um, and then some of them are for-profit developments, so they, they do pay property taxes. Some other criteria, the, the management team knowing who is developing it and knowing who is gonna manage the property in the future. Um, impact of traffic, impact on area schools. For example, if we had a giant development in a school that we knew that NISD told us, hey, this elementary school zone is absolutely full up, we can't hold any more students here. And we had a tax credit project that was, you know, proposing four hundred new apartments in that district, that, that could play a role in your decision-making. Preservation of environmental assets, impact on the surrounding neighborhood, and then participation in the requested public meetings. If we asked them to come and, and hold these meetings and participate, did they show up to all of them? So, if you, if the council, should the council choose to support any of the, um, requests, that support will last for a year. Um, unless the project makes substantial changes, and I'll go over those in just a minute. Um, just another note, the city doesn't really play any role in these TVHCA, low-income housing tax credits other than this one particular instance where they ask you for a resolution of support. Other than zoning and building permitting, the city doesn't, doesn't play a role in that. We just always wanna make sure everybody is, is, remembers that. So, substantial changes. So, should the city council approve, um, a resolution of support? And there is a substantial change of the kind listed on here, um, they would be required to come back and ask for another letter of support. Um, so you would have the opportunity to change your minds at that point. If they said, we're gonna build fifty units, and they changed their mind and, and after you've issued your resolution of support to a hundred units, they would have to come back and ask, and, and go through the whole process again. So, our annual schedule, and I apologize, there was a typo in the, I noticed in the, um, in the policy in your packets. Um, the last part of here, we had to make an adjustment based on the state timeline, and so this is the, um, what should be in your packets. Um, we will ask them to hold a neighborhood meeting in December, and just like the planning and zoning, um, department, um, helps developers hold neighborhood meetings for zoning changes, we will, we will assist the developers in that. Um, we'll have an application that would be due to us the third Friday of December. Then, um, after that, any of the applications that we receive will determine whose ward those, those lie in, and we'll set up a meeting with the affected council member, um, and the developer. Um, then we will have a town hall meeting, we had this last year, where we have, um, all of the applicants come and present to the entire community. Um, then we will let them, ask them to make a city council presentation to you all at once, um, or all together. And then, at another meeting, we will ask you to, um, file your, your consideration, um, for the resolution of support or take no action. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone wanna speak to this item? Okay. Counsel? Any comments?
It looks, it looks good to me.
This is basically a review of what we've had in the past.
It really is. Um, we just put it all in writing and, and really formalized it. The timeline may be slightly different, um, but it, it essentially, that timeline, it's, I know it's not great that it's all in the holidays, but it's the way the state's timeline works. They have to get their pre-application in, I believe, in December. Um, and then they have to have their final application in by the end of February. And so, we have a very short window there to actually know who is going to apply, and then when you have to submit the resolution by. So, unfortunately, we have to do a little bit of work there at the end of the year, um, when it's hard to get people to meetings, I understand that.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Oh, I have several questions. Um, have we talked with other cities about how these policies have impacted them? And what's been successful and what's not been successful?
I have not spoken to any, any other cities. I will say that this policy is extremely similar to many other cities. Um, I didn't write this from scratch. We certainly took policies that were in other cities. Um, so, so no, I did, I've, I've not spoken to any of those cities.
Smaller cities to see, uh, 'cause, um, when we set up policies, they have two impacts. One is they can, they, they, uh, limit discretion, which is helpful, but they limit discretion, which is also sometimes problematic. So, I'd be curious what other cities have, have had, um, their experiences. Um, before we ever, you know, look at that. And I know timelines are very different in some other cities also, um, so I have a lot of questions about the, the timelines. And, and there's some other, like, paragraphs that are in, um, some cities. So, I, and I would like some time to be able to, to, um, share them with, like, people in my ward and get their impact and input. And, um, I'd almost like to put this conversation off until, um, until, um, after January. 'Cause if we, I understand we're not, that, that, uh, we're no, we're not the, um, highlighted, uh, like we were last year, where this is, we're not the most attractive spot because, uh, the census tract, there's a new census tract down in Lovken that actually makes it a higher priority it was just made. So, if we, I would love to spend some time on it, if that's okay.
Um, we have, tonight's agenda item is just for your discussion and your feedback about this draft. Um, staff's initial preference was to put it on this agenda for discussion, um, have it out in the community for discussion, and then, um, have you hopefully approve a final policy, whatever that policy looks like, um, at the first meeting in December. Because I would like to apply this to this year's round of applications.
I would prefer to, I mean, I don't, we only have the one, and that's for, right, application.
That is the only formal request I've gotten. I can't predict that we won't receive others.
Then it's not started yet.
It's, this is about the time when we should be getting them.
Um, um, I would say both and, I'm perfectly fine with looking at this and getting input from different wards and thinking more about this. But I am also uncomfortable with moving forward into this season of this without any sort of guidance in the case that something come, that, that we get other applicants.
I would, I will say this, if, if, and I don't mean this in a, in a negative way, if, if we receive, if I receive tomorrow morning three applications, I will follow something that is very similar to this. To, I'll follow essentially the schedule, um, because I think it's the right thing to do, as far as asking them to have neighborhood meetings. Um, asking them to meet with a council member, asking them to have a, a town hall meeting. Um, and so, if there's any additional meetings or you don't want me to follow that process, please let me know now. Um, because like we said, we, we have a limited timeframe to respond to these requests.
I think that's reasonable.
Well, then I'll tell you some of my concerns right now.
Yes, please do, please do.
So, first of all, I'd like to, since most of these will probably be in the northeast ward, um, I would prefer that they met with a city council member right away, uh, instead of in January.
Okay.
Um, and, um, and I would like to have a couple of neighborhood meetings. Um, I think that would be very helpful to them. The first, where they introduce the idea, and I understand that some of the most successful low-income housing, um, LHTCs, um, are, are ones where they actually have a collaboration, and they work together with the, uh, with the applicant developer. And so, a couple of neighborhood meetings. Um, one, um, um, I believe it's Sherman, uh, has all the applications due October thirty-first. And they, um, say the reason that, why it's due October thirty-first, to give some extra time for collaboration. And then, um, they, there's a, a paragraph, uh, in a couple of them that they have a right to deviate from these policies if they want to.
Sure, sure, and we can certainly add that.
Number of them, I, I'd like to see more engagement with the community. I'd like to be able to meet with them ahead of time. So, those are all, and those are in other cities, at least one other city's policies.
So, we can easily switch, um, that we would have, um, a meeting. Let me just do a little bit of explanation, and then, and then we can, I can try to address, um, the, the neighborhood meeting issue. Our thought was that they have a neighborhood meeting before they even submit an application.
That's great.
Um, because it could change the nature of their application. Um, and then, after we get an application, we would have a meeting with a council member. Because if we don't receive an application, there's no need to have a meeting with the council member. Um, so that's, that's why that's fre- that was timed that way. Um, so, I would just open that up for, to see if that addresses your issue, or?
Uh, no, because, uh, um, I think, uh, I mean, I would prefer it earlier just to ask, ask a lot of questions.
Okay.
You know, and that might help them know too, whether they wanna proceed.
Can they make an application by October thirty-first? Do they know enough at, at that time? Or would they just be an inquiry possibly, or?
They, they can make an application anytime they want, or they can have, um, I can't reme- here, I'll pull it up and see what they say. But anyway, they, these are, I, I don't like to be put, to do this, this fast. I, I would rather have, I would rather not adopt a policy and follow these, these things that I'm suggesting to you. And then afterwards, you know, with a little more research and visiting with our ward, adopt a policy later on. I, I'd really.
Sure, and that's totally fine. I have, I have two questions. Um, so just, so we can kinda move forward in two different ways. So, your preference would be uh, we have a meeting with the council member whose ward is affected, they have a neighborhood meeting, there's an application. We have another meeting with the council member, we have another neighborhood meeting. Then we have the town hall meeting, the council presentation, and then the final, am I getting that right?
I think, I, I think we need a little more flexibility. We might never need another m- meeting with a council member. You might not need a, a second neighborhood meeting, but those should be things that we think about and we consider.
Sure, and we can always add to this. What I wanted this to be was just the bare minimum expectation. Because I, I would never wanna present one of these to you, um, as a group that you haven't seen one-on-one first, if it's in your ward. I, I just felt like that was the right thing to do.
Is, is there a way to get them to contact us? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm with Ms. Bellinger on that. I'd like for them to contact us as soon as they, as soon as they got an idea. I, i- is there a way to do that?
Sure, and we can certainly ask for that early. I have been told by at least one, and please don't ask me which one, because I do not remember. But I've been told that, that November, say, mid-November was, was really when they were narrowing things down, and they really didn't even have contracts, um, until I believe it was the end of November last year. I'll, I'll have to double-check that. But if, if.
But they're already zeroing in on a place, I guess.
So.
And we can certainly open that, we can certainly back that date up and, and know that, um, the first year we may miss them. You know, we just talked about communication. It's, it's all a matter of communication. It's a matter of, of these, these developers knowing when they have to get this information into council by if they expect to receive a resolution of support. And that is, that is their development, is part of their development process. So, that onus is really on them to know, this is the process I need to go through in order to get Nakatosh support for my project.
The first thing they would do would be a contract on land. When did those happen last time? Do, do y'all, do you remember?
It was, I felt like it was November.
Was it?
No, the contracts, they, they all wrote, um, contracts well in advance, but all the contracts were contingent.
Yeah, but, but do you think they wrote them back in like October or something like that?
They wrote them back in like April, May, June.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, I just.
Let's check on that and see when they wrote them.
Well, well in advance. And then, um, they know what they're thinking, 'cause they do call people and start calling around. And this will happen next year. Um, but it, it, it isn't this year because of that new census tract. That's why we haven't been getting calls and all that. And, um, but, and so, again, I, I am not prepared to vote on a policy here.
And I'm not asking you for that tonight. No, no, tonight is just for discussion.
Even on December sixth.
Okay.
I think we, we, we need to wait, and I think these are all really good questions to ask.
You just gotta give some direction though, because we could get an application.
Well, in this, we, we have an informal, it's way late, um, for how this would be. There, we, by this time last year, we had already had several calls.
By now, before December?
It was around Thanksgiving.
Well.
Yeah, so here pretty quick, yeah.
So, um, the other, so then the other question I had, so, one, we can certainly back this timeline up. And, and we can change the application due date by October and move all of this up by several months. We can certainly, certainly do that, um, if it's the council's prerogative. Oh, can the date be something that we talk about when we talk about more discussions on, on the policy? Because I think that we need clarification on how early the state releases the information and the, the, the data that it releases in order for people to, or these developers to know whether to make an application. And so, I think that that's unclear. And I'm uncomfortable with saying any date right now. And I also agree that it's a little late to place a date for this coming season. Um, I'm fine with council members being, with the council member meeting being as early as possible. And then, if the council member wants another meeting, they can request it.
Okay.
Um, I also think that two neighborhood meetings is a good idea. I think we're, right now, we're just like talking soft policy ideas until we can put something on the, on the calendar to flush this out a little bit better. Um, what else?
New guy here. Um, I didn't go through this process like the rest of the council did last year. I think having maybe, uh, a timeline of when we started receiving application and having something more comprehensive on what happened last year and why we were led in the direction to choose this sort of framework. I mean, I can look through it and say, well, that makes sense, but why did we do that?
Sure.
So, if we, if we find out concrete details, like Councilmember Fisher said, on what are the state requirements? And when do they start getting that information out? I think that could help us set the stage for next year, certainly. But, I mean, we're talking about setting a, a deadline, what, four weeks from now? I mean, if we were to adopt that the first week of December, we're saying, our deadline's two weeks from now.
But they will, would likely already be in the process anyway.
Right.
I'm trying to look in my emails, but it was, it was before this. And the reason, and, and there are two issues. One is, um, pretty much they know in advance who is going to be, um, the, the top of the list. Which areas are going to have the highest priority to receive the federal funds and to get their ninety, the ninety percent of their dollars back. And they, based on last year's. And so, they generally have, unless, unless, uh, the state changes its criteria, if the, the state uses the same criteria, they would know long in advance. And they start making inquiries, and they start looking at land purchases, and they start actually trying to get this, get these things down. So, there's a, a soft idea, but then the state. So there's a, a soft idea, but then the state finally, there is some date that the state finally makes its determination. Um, and, and I think Sherman asked for um, people to make some kind of application. Prior to that, that determination, or maybe on the same date. It's right around the end of October.
So I can certainly back this timeline up. There is, this, this timeline was based off of our experience last year and based on the, their final submission to the state by February twenty eighth. That's exact, there's no mysterious reasoning behind it. That is exactly where it, where it came from, our experience last year. And the state's timeline of February twenty eighth. Um, we backed off of that. Um, and that, and also that the bulk of this work happens in January, which is when the holidays are, are passed. Um, having a neighborhood meeting in, in December, staff felt like that was, that was doable in the entire month of December. Um, and so if we do want to add more meetings, then yes, we do need to back the deadline time, the date timeline back. Um, I'm sorry, the application timeline back. And, and I certainly can do that when I bring a policy back to you. Um, I don't know that I'm allowed to ask this, so Mr. Kirkland, please stop me. Um, if I receive, I mean, we do have a request, um, if I receive another request. Um, I'm going to follow generally this procedure and, and I hope everyone is, is agreeable to that. Am I allowed to ask that? He waved his hand, so yes. Um, so as long as you're all okay with that, we're gonna generally follow this timeline with any requests we receive this year.
I mean, and I think just, uh, whenever you get the request, open that dialogue right away between the council member and the mayor. I, I think is, is very appropriate.
We will absolutely do that. That, I, that is a change I'll make to this. I will, for any that we received this year, um, will immediately set the meeting with the council member, um, and the mayor. Um, we will um, immediately schedule the neighborhood meeting following that meeting with the council member. And then move, move forward from there.
At, at what point in any of these ti- so, the city council presentation. So at what point would the entire council be briefed on this in your current timeline? Would it be that first council meeting in February?
So I will, and I can certainly add this, um, as soon as we have all of the applications. I will forward them to cities, city council. I believe we did that at some, at some point last year. I don't remember exactly when it fell. Um, probably in, in Ja- January, I, January, I would say we would send that on to the entire council. The entire council would receive a presentation together in early February. And then the entire council together would vote on a resolution in late February. So you would have data in early January, let's say, and then a discussion, two opportunities for a discussion in February.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to sixty, consider award of bid to TCMC in the amount of nine hundred ninety thousand. For the construction of four park restrooms located at Pecan Park, Maroni Park, Festival Park, and Pilgrim Sportsplex. Community Services Director, Brian Bray.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council Brian Bray, you're Community Services Director. Um, I think the last several times I've talked to you about restrooms, it's been more along the lines of, here's what it costs to demolish, or here's what it costs to repair. And that's slightly different than what we have here this evening. This evening is to award a contract to build restrooms at Pilgrim Sportsplex, Maroni, Pecan Park, and Festival Park. These projects, and I use plural because they've been funded in different years, these projects started in two thousand eighteen. When we funded um, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a restroom at Pecan Park. And in twenty nineteen, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a restroom at Maroni Park. And then in twenty twenty, two hundred and ten thousand to do a restroom at Festival Park. And then uh, we did not have, or do not have, a specific amount for the restroom at Pilgrim Sportsplex. Because that was a lump sum donation to do specific projects. So unlike our typical city funding where it's a hundred thousand for this, fifty thousand for this. This was, here's a sum of money to accomplish these things. And so that's why that one was not listed individually in your AIS. So we went out to bid um, last summer and ultimately opened up bids on September twenty first, twenty twenty one. Where city council heard a recommendation from the architect and from staff that we recommended to you to cancel those bids. The per unit price was two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars a year ago, just a little bit over a year ago. Um, and we were seeing a trend of material costs going down. And there was some optimism that that would continue to go down. And so we asked council if we could bring it back in the spring of twenty twenty two. So as uh, Mr. Curtis, the architect who's here this evening, if I fail to mention that later, if you have questions of him, he's here too. Um, but we went, uh, started to do that in the spring and realized that NISD was going out to bid for two restrooms. And so Mr. Curtis and I got together and said, you know, why don't we align our bid packets? They're completely separate, you know, we can't tie them together, two different businesses, um, but let's align our packets the same. And so we advertised for bids in September of this year and opened up bids on September sixth, um, twenty, twenty twenty two. And had three bidders um, turn in bids. And that was CM of Southeast Texas, Paragon Construction, and they're in White House. And I can't remember where CM is located. And TCMC is out of Tyler, and they were um, the low bidder. What they were bidding on was this design right here. Um, I think you've seen black and white renderings of this in the past, but this is the local design, local build option. Um, it is much larger than the restrooms that we currently have in place. Although the layout appears to be similar, in scale, it's much larger. Um, these are fully ADA compliant, so you have a five foot turning radius inside of each of these. The older design, which you heard me talk about at the previous council meeting last week, is, is not. And so that's why they feel so much tighter. Um, really, the biggest difference in this design, in our current design, is cleaning capabilities. So that really large chase, it looks like an oversized chase. That chase allows staff to have a part for everything onsite. So we can have a sink, a urinal, a pee trap. Whatever it is, a component for repairs can be onsite in that trap. Because we have a lack of storage space right now, if this restroom was built and we didn't have that storage space, we have to place the order when the part breaks. Then we have to wait for that part to arrive before we can fix it. Additionally, you can see the little red thing on there, that's a hose reel. And so Mr. Curtis designed these with a large drain in the floor on each side. So you can go in, spray down your cleaning product all over the walls, over the floors, and then take a hose and clean it out and it washes out. Um, so this is a much different design, even though the layout appears to be the same, it is a much different design than what we currently have in our parks. So at our last council meeting a year ago, where I presented those bids and um, recommended that you cancel them. There was a guidance from council to look at prefabricated restroom designs. Um, we really tried to can, be able to compare apples to apples. Um, however, the prefab, um, Coreworth and CXT, it's not exactly the same. So one of them says, hey, y'all, I'll bring you four walls and a roof. You have the site cleared, the form, fa- foundation poured, and then we'll put your building together. Um, the other one says, well, we'll put the slab in, but you have to do the demolition in, in advance. And so Mr. Curtis worked really hard to try to be able to compare so that you could see exactly one to the other. And those unit costs came out to two hundred and fifty one thousand nine hundred dollars for the prefab. Whereas TCMC, which is the local design and build, came to two forty seven, five hundred. Um, of course, council, you don't have just a one or the other here this evening. You can also choose to not award the bid, but then that means that we would then need to use some of those funds that have been allocated for demolition of those existing restrooms. And there is a typo on your slide, and I apologize, I realized that yesterday, and I didn't wanna try and change it, so I'll just point it out right here. On that slide that says demolition of restrooms, we do not have restrooms at Maroni and Pilgrims. So it would not cost five thousand dollars per part, so the actual demolition cost would be ten thousand, should you choose to, to go that route. Um, and then the, the, kind of touching on the next agenda item, which is the budget amendment. I wanna see if I can make something kind of clear. Um, once again, I'm not a math person, my background is history and library science, so I, I got with finance director to make sure I said this the right way. So the contract for TCMC is nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. The budget amendment includes two additional items, and that is the remainder of the A and E, which is Architectural and Engineering Services. To foresee, to see this through completion with Army Curtis. So that's seventeen thousand five hundred, and then we also did not include a contingency when we bid this out. All of you have heard Mr. Bartlett and several others talk about large projects, there's always something that comes up. Now, we don't anticipate that there will be, but just the past says that there should be something. So there's also thirty thousand dollars built into that budget amendment. So we're actually asking to award a contract of nine hundred ninety thousand. The budget amendment would then allow us to, should some overage come up, we would have those funds already budgeted to move forward. Um, so Mayor, after a public comment, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right. Anyone that'd like to speak to this item?
Uh, I'm Robert McCandless, and I've got a silly title, Old Town Pickleball Ambassador. With USA Pickleball. Uh, one of the things that we're dealing with right now is growth at uh, Benita Park. We've had uh, courts open for two weeks now, and we're seeing thirty people in the mornings, twenty-five people every evening. Plus the people in the dog park, plus walkers and people who use other parts of the park. I know this is a kind of an obliquely uh, associated thing with the park budget uh, that Brian's talking about. But if we're going to do anything with the parks, I think one of the things we may need to do is look at what is happening at Benita. And get some things fixed down into the uh, the bathrooms there. Also, I know this is uh, kind of aside on that. We're uh, right now, one of the uh, people is bringing their classy RVs so ladies can use the restroom. And uh, also to Maroni Park, so that uh, we can use the restrooms there. It's a, it's a real issue, and uh, just wanted to let y'all know if there's any priority on restrooms being fixed. Uh, certainly, we're gonna need Maroni real quick, but uh, Benita needs some fixing too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Melanie Wilson. I've lived and worked in Neckadotus for almost ten years. Um, here to say that I fully support um, completely funding the park restrooms. And just wanted to speak to um, having these restrooms um, as described, um, as an equity issue. Um, cities have traditionally not been planted to consider uh, women's needs in particular. I'm not saying this city council, but just traditionally. Um, and you know, women, like, it's a fact that women need to use the uh, restroom more. And it's generally inappropriate for women um, to use the restroom um, outside that. You know, when you're at the park with your kids, or um, dads and granddads are at the park with their daughters or granddaughters. Um, and we want to attract Neckadotus families. And uh, traditionally, um, you know, you'll see women of childbearing age or pregnant women at the parks. Um, and um. Uh, they will want more likely to go to the parks if there is clean, you know, permanent restrooms. Uh, with the current porta-potties, there's also accessibility issues for those using a wheelchair or other assistive devices. Um, and you know, I think that we can have a surviving community with the porta-potties. But that a thriving, healthy community uh, has maintained parks and, and permanent restrooms. And I think that, you know, the, everyone in the city council agrees that, that's our goal is to have Neckadotus be a community that thrives.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brandy Cartwright. I'm with the Parks Advocacy League, and we actually had Michelle here, but she had to run. Her husband had an appointment, so she had to get back to her kids. Um, so I'm gonna take some of her notes and hopefully it'll all flow together. But, um, we think that bathrooms are very needed in all of our parks. And we're very thankful that we're looking at these um, three, four parks. Um, four permanent bathrooms. Um. For, we know that um, there will always be an unending debate. About what's the highest priority in a city. Um, you know, city budgets look at streets and sewers and emergency services and recreational amenities. And we think that recreational men- amenities, specifically bathrooms. Are really important to every single person in our community. All of the people who, who um, visit parks need them. I have talked to, because this is a very important issue to me. So I've stopped people in parks and asked them, who, do you want a bathroom in this park? Um, when I've been at Pecan, and I've talked to disc golf players, I've talked to mountain bikers, I've talked to cyclists, I've talked to runners. I've talked to parents, I've talked to elders who are in the parks, and dog owners, and just like random people I saw walking in the park. And um, there was not one person who said, no, I don't think we need a bathroom in the park. Um, you know, they all had ideas about, you know, what a, a good bathroom would look like. You know, some of those included, you know, sinks inside and outside, cause some parents just need to wash hands. Or um, you know, diaper changing stations I heard often. Um, all of them also wanted water stations included in bathrooms. If that could, near bathrooms, if that could be possible. Um, because water fountains, bottle refills, and dog fountains can also, that's a plumbing thing. Um, so we're, we're hoping that you also consider that um, while they're building um, these bathrooms. But um, but these three parks are definitely um, high priority. For all of the bathrooms, but I think that every park should have a bathroom. Whether it's something like Portland does, that's a single facility that has a, a sink on the outside. They have some really cool ones that um, are like ninety thousand dollars for, for a bathroom. But every single park should have at least one facility. And um, I'm very happy that we're finally, finally. I remember the first time I came to a par- to a park in Neckadotus, it was eleven years ago. And I tried to take my two-year-old into the bathroom. And if you have not visited one of our bathrooms that are currently there, please go do it before they tear them down. Because it's kinda scary if you try to go inside. I, I think they're locked now. They weren't locked then, they were still sort of functional, but not really. Um, but if you haven't been, definitely go and look at it and see how needed it is. And um, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council, any, any, any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Sure.
But I, I still might wanna ask Brian a question. But th- this, this past weekend, I was, had the opportunity to go to uh, the Cadence Houston Open Golf Tournament. And I, my daughter went with me. And so we was eating lunch, and she says, why are you eating lunch without having something to drink? She says, I don't wanna go to a porta potty. And I never crossed my mind, but what she said is, after you use it, you don't have hand washing facilities. In most porta-potties, uh, either on that side. Now, some of the golf tournaments, they have them on the outside, where you can use, when, once you use the restroom, you come outside. And you can wash your hands. And that was a major part in her deciding if she wanted to drink a coconut. But the, the other part of it is, you know, you and I had a discussion and we didn't agree on. We a- agree that the restrooms are needed, but uh. Now, there was no restrooms in the southeast ward that was on your list. And that includes Benita Creek and also Richie Park. Now, and I'm, I'm, I looked at the reason why the ones that was chosen would be volume. Would I be correct in saying that?
Yes, sir, that's correct, and, and it was, it's actually a recommendation in the Parks Master Plan. So the Parks Master Plan is the, is the, the body that we used. Um, and I wrote it down just in case someone asks that question, Mr. Bolden. Um, first priority for restroom improvements should be cities' community level parks, such as Pecan, Maroni, and Festival Parks. And so that's why those three were on there, and then just a reminder, Pilgrims was a donation. So that wasn't something that, you know, we at, that staff added, it was a donation, so that's why it's on the list.
And I looked at Richie Park, now, there's gonna be an upgrade to Richie Park in the near future.
Yes, sir.
That's been funded, correct?
Correct. Installation will start this month.
Right, so we uh, look for the volume to be extremely high. Because in, in that neighborhood, there's not a lot of traffic at the park. Mainly because of the old equipment.
Right.
Right, now, we expect in the near future for that, maybe even double or triple. But I would like to see a restroom at Benita Creek and Richie Park. That is, you know, as soon as we could catch on the priority list.
It's, it all comes down to funding, Mr. Bolden. So those, those two, those two parks you mentioned were, those two parks you mentioned were ones that I just asked for demolition last week.
Right.
Because they were part of that CO package for restrooms.
And what about if we look at maybe, uh, portable hand washer?
Uh, yes, sir. So that is an option for events, um, but leaving those portable hand washing stations for a long period of time, they disappear.
So there's, there's no way to attach one to the outside of a, a porta potty?
I will definitely look into that and let you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Councilman Bellinger?
No comments?
Um, a question, kind of follow-up on the, on the, um, selection of the, um, of the particular parks. Um, it's clear to me where they came from, but I share, um, the concern with there not being, um, Southeast Ward parks on there. One of my questions, um, for Festival Park, is the reason, as far as you know, is the reason that it was designated as a community level park, um, just the fact that the city sometimes holds events down there?
No, ma'am, it's actually a classification for parks. So you have, um, different levels of parks and it depends on what residential parks, community level parks. And so because of its location, because of its size and because of its use, it's labeled as a community park.
What do you mean because of its use?
Because it is heavily used by a number of groups.
Okay.
Festivals is just an additional thing. So the Festival Park doesn't play into it being designated as a community park. Um, there's, because of the trail that runs through it, because there is the availability of concerts, we have lots of events, birthday party type events, the basketball court. So it is a, it, it's just, it's a definition.
Okay. Um, how is that data in terms of like use and foot traffic gathered? Do you know? To make that, because they have to base it on something to, to classify it?
I would have to look that up because that study was from two thousand seventeen, so I, I don't remember what data they used to classify it as a community level park.
Okay. Um, because I mean, if, if, if the whole rationale behind the selection of these parks is that they're the most heavily used and we don't know where that data is coming from or how it was gathered?
I mean, I, I have that data, but I, I just don't remember since it's been, since it's been more than a few years ago.
Okay. Um, I think that's all I have.
Okay, so the questions of my, my colleagues up here have, just a, a question. Are we locked in with these four locations? Certainly Pilgrims is one that was done by a donation. Are these bids to say these restrooms go in these locations?
Yes, sir, they are. So the only option would be to cancel these bids and direct staff to rebid with different parks.
So there's not really any discussion to be had. Plus, if we go and rebid this again, it will cost more.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we're already talking fifty thousand dollars more for these four restrooms than a year ago when the bids were canceled.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I make a motion that we approve regular agenda item six D as presented.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move on to six E. Council, do you need additional information? Are you gonna go to have a, have a motion on six E?
I just, I just wanted to clarify that, um, all of these were things that have been in the works a long time prior and none of these are the ones that are on the, that were on the certificates of obligation.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. The ones that Mr. Bolden was asking about wanting to have restrooms in, those were on that package. These have been funded between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty.
Just short funding.
Yeah, it's just we, we need a little more money.
Correct.
Put into it. Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Do I have a motion on six E?
I'll make the motion that we, uh, um, approve item six E as written.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Bray.
Thank you.
Move forward to six F. Consider approval of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-four, article five, noise and vibrations of the City of Akadotus, Texas Code of Ordinances to update and streamline the regulation of noise and provide for prosecution of violations of the standards set out in the code. Assistant Chief Terravella.
Good afternoon, uh, Council and Mayor. I'm Dan Terravella with the Akadotus Police Department, Assistant Chief of Police, and I'm here to discuss an amendment, a p- a proposed amendment to our, what we just simply call our noise ordinance. Um, and it, it, uh, was precipitated by many complaints over the last year or two years, um, primarily vehicle exhaust noise. Um, but we really just took this opportunity to clean up our entire noise ordinance and myself and Mr. Kirkland worked on this and, and, um, sought samples from other cities and, and, um, some best practices and, um, and then from his prosecute, uh, prosecutorial, uh, perspective, what he could prosecute. Um, so what we, 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 what we did was change just some of the, um, we kind of rearranged some things in the ordinance. I think you've got a copy of the ordinance, you were given an, a information packet. Uh, we kind of rearranged some things, we streamlined some things, we changed some times. Um, previously our city ordinance had a lot of different times, whether it was related to, um, vehicle or, or residential noise versus construction noise. And what we did was just basically made one timeframe and a lot of cities do that. It was, it was too cumbersome to keep up with, um, what started at seven AM versus, uh, six AM and things like that. Um, so we, we, um, changed some ti- the timeframes in, in the ordinance. We, um, um, like I said, we, we removed some language, we added some language, but hopefully this will, um, uh, give us a little bit, a little bit better of an opportunity to enforce some of the, the noise, uh, complaints we get. I'm sure you, I, I know some of you folks have gotten those complaints because they've trickled down to us, uh, when you, when you folks are contacted by your constituents. Um, and, and, and primarily the, like I said recently, for some reason, it's the vehicle exhaust noise that's, that's been a hindrance. So that's why we tackled it, but while we had the opportunity, we just kind of cleaned up the whole ordinance.
Thank you, you did a great job. Thank you for your work. Uh, is, is there any public comment regarding the ordinance? Yes, sir.
Philip Blackburn, I live on Logan's Fourth Street. I just had a couple of questions and maybe a comment or two. Um, there in the section, I guess thirty-four, one fifty-two and, uh, number two, where it says it's plenty audible between the hours of nine PM and six AM at a distance of fifty feet, et cetera. Does that mean that the noise ordinance is only gonna be enforced during that period of time? In other words, if there's noise outside of that period of time, is that gonna be enforced as well or what's the significance of the time in that regard?
The, uh, the time was just a, th- there, there's, there's events throughout the city, um, and, and different things that cause noise, but primarily i- if it's still unreasonable, um, as it's written in this ordinance, it could still be, action can still be taken on folks, but this is primarily, um, the time that, and it's, it actually specifies in certain, is this yours or mine?
Yeah, it's mine.
Um, this actually specifies with the, under this actual one is operation of sound equipment. There's one where it talks about the time for, um, construction, um, lawn, lawn services. And, uh, here's the construction. So that was just a, we, we al- always had timeframes in the ordinance, but it was different for, for every, or, or several different times included. And this was just a way for us to streamline the time, but it is, it is, um, the time that it will be enforced where officers can either cite somebody or a person can sign a complaint against somebody. Um, outside those timeframes, it will really be a discretionary thing if you're, if you're, if you're prior to or after those hours. It'll be a discretionary thing on part of the police officer responding to it and also on part of Mr. Kirkland as far as prosecuting, something like that.
Just to clarify, the unreasonable noise standard applies across the board all the time. Um, there are certain activities that are defined more specifically that have the timeframes associated with them.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make a comment about because, uh, in times past, like with the old ordinance, uh, when you do put a time period in there, it causes confusion. Because I've had that happen to me before when I was gonna make a complaint about a, a loud noise. I, I was told by the dispatcher that it wasn't against the law to make these loud noises, uh, other than between these times. And so there's a confusion and I've had police officers tell me that as well. And I've seen in past, uh, ordinances when we did have a time period for like this car stereo, uh, type noise that we're having a problem with too, is if you did put the prima facie example, you know, if it occurs between nine PM and six AM at a distance of fifty feet, well, that's because the ambient noise is much lower, you know, during the nighttime. They would also put, uh, between six AM and nine o'clock PM, maybe a further distance, that would be a prima facie case. That would emphasize the fact that this, uh, noise ordinance for loud car stereos applies twenty-four hours a day. You know, where some people have the impression it only applies at night. So I'd like to see something changed in the ordinance that would either emphasize that the noise ordinance applies twenty-four hours a day or add something in there, maybe at a further distance, twice as far, whatever, for the time period between six AM and nine PM.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. Council, uh, Mr. Ogby?
Mr. Kirkland, I just, uh, I wanna make sure I understood you correctly. Engine braking, that is something that would qualify as being applied at any time of day or night. There's not a, a time window where that's being restricted. So there are, that and other categories of things that are listed in the ordinance would be enforceable any time of day or night.
And you can violate more than one section by a particular noise. Uh, engine braking could be unreasonable on its face because of where it happens or it could be unreasonable because it's within the city limits and violated the sign. Um, loud party, same thing.
Could it be also an equipment issue?
Yes.
Okay.
So the timing just makes clear that that particular activity during that timeframe has been known to be a problem and we're making sure that there's fair notice to people that we consider this per se unreasonable. That doesn't mean something outside that timeframe is not also unreasonable and could be prosecuted under a different section of the ordinance. Follow?
Could, could you like clarify where that is or, I mean, and, and with the police, say for example, they, there is a huge, very loud, sorry, very loud stereo blaring and that's, you know, totally unreasonable.
And it's seven AM.
Yeah, at seven AM.
So the very first,
This is really early.
First piece of the, the ordinance is a person commits an offense, if he makes or causes to be made an unreasonably loud or disturbing noise or vibration in the city that is offensive to the ordinary sensibilities of persons in the city. That has no timeframe, it has no limit. The limits are ordinary persons and offensive to ordinary sensibilities of persons. So that's what I can prove in court and I'd have to bring in the people to say this was offensive to me and I'm an ordinary person.
And then below that, it also says that,
Ordinary people.
It would include things that, that it's not exclusive to just the, the things that are listed in there, that it, it, it's expand, you know.
Such enumeration shall not be deemed exclusive. That's right there. And then the rest of these is for people that are commonly, that are commonly viol- common violations that people complain about.
So, so maybe it's a, an issue of training, um, maybe, um, the dispatchers or, you know, that,
The prior ordinance was confusing.
Yeah.
And it had been cobbled together over a period of time, so it was hard to find things. And as it is, we still have one noise ordinance that is not in here and that's the performance standard that's found in the zoning section. Um, so it, and it didn't fit here for a variety of reasons, so we left it where it was. But this was to make it easier for everybody who uses it to find it.
So I'm back to, you know, making sure it's communicated and we have, and we're trying.
So if this is approved, um, then yes, it will definitely be, um, disseminated through the department. Um, you know, s- so many ordinances, s- s- most of these ordinances are older than the officers that are enforcing them, myself included. Um, this one's not. Um, but i- i- it will be disseminated that there, there is a new ordinance. We do want to, um, since we took, took the initiative to amend it, we want to enforce it. Obviously, we took the initiative because there were complaints. And so, um, it'll be shared with the, with all the personnel as to, to please read this, please be familiar with it, be familiar with the times, be familiar with the fact that it's not exclusive to just vehicles or stereos, that it can be anything that somebody i- that, that's just absolutely, um, unreasonable in a neighborhood or, or wherever.
And, and maybe if you can, um, um, tell us to, you know, well, that's all right. Um, I'm just trying to think of how, if we need to record it or what, or if it's, you know, how, what do we, what do I need to do if I call in, you know?
Well, you know, if, if it's a neighbor with music, you know, officers arrive, sometimes it's turned off and that happens a lot, especially in a college town. The officers go to college parties and sometimes, uh, it's still going on and it's in full swing and, and other times they've all dispersed before they get there. Um, so, uh, if, if you, if you wanna wish to make a recording, you can do that, show an officer, they'll still go over there, make contact. Um, just like with, with vehicle noise, we'll, we'll try to make contact with whoever we can deem is the responsible party, whether it's a homeowner or a vehicle passing through your neighborhood if we're able to locate it. Um, so, uh, uh, I have a friend, uh, who lives a block over from me who sends me a t- a recording every time a particular vehicle comes through his street. Um, it doesn't matter if it's eleven thirty at night, I know I'm gonna get a text and sometimes I'll hear it because it cuts down our road. Um, so if we can locate the owner, then that's helpful.
Thank you.
Um, I appreciate the work that you guys did to clean this up, you, Mr. Kirkland. I realize that it did need to be, um, cleaned up. And I have also heard from some constituents, I think I forwarded them to you, about, um, vehicle exhaust noise. I have not heard complaints about car music. Um, and I guess the, the exhaust thing is another issue that I wanna bring up in a second. Um, I didn't think that I would have issues with this initially and, um, I started doing some research on it and it might sound like a weird hill for me to die on. I'm not gonna die on it, but I am standing on it. Um, I am concerned despite the good intentions, um, and the neutral way in which it is written, um, I'm concerned about enforcement. And I was looking into just doing some research and I know this might be super annoying, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Um, I read several articles on noise ordinances, um, and there was one that summarized my concerns really well and better than I think that I can articulate them, so I'm gonna read it to you. Um, and with my ultimate question being whether these things were taken into consideration at all and if they were not, um, how we can take them into consideration moving forward if we do adopt this ordinance. Um, stop scowling at me.
Don't need to be scowling, I'm making sure I'm hearing.
Okay. Um, it says, "Despite the best intentions of those who propose such laws, they are potentially a bigger danger to civil liberties than the behavior that they purport to regulate. The enforcement of such laws does little to curb the behavior in question, but may function as a content-based regulation of certain types of music, provides opportunities for racial profiling and may harm the legitimacy of the government, thus reducing its ability to use its police power in areas which are more appropriate for the use of that power." Um, I think that that hits on various things, one being the fact that it is no, um, secret that our police staff is really strapped currently. I know that we've taken steps to, um, to remedy that, but that still, it's still the case that, um, we have a shortage of police officers who can patrol and respond to actual crimes as opposed to somebody's car music being too loud. Um, I, I'm also concerned with the policy not as written, but as applied in terms of, um, I think back to the Del Carmen report and I know that we have a really good dialogue going on and I know that it's something that we're working on, um, particularly with you and Chief Weems. But, um, since I've been on council and probably years before that, the numbers are consistent that, and, and this is from the Del Carmen reports, that if you are a black person, you are, I think, three times more likely to be searched if your car is stopped. And those are numbers that are, um, shocking enough that I think that they should be addressed. And I am uncomfortable moving forward with something that could provide another And I am uncomfortable moving forward with something that could provide another avenue for that without also, in conjunction, moving forward with addressing those types of issues. What?
The racial profiling concerns that you're raising are ones that exist in the current ordinance. So the revisions to the ordinance don't increase or decrease the likelihood of profiling being an enforcement problem, or this being used as a pretext for a stop, which is, what you're suggesting is that it's possibly worth giving another pretext for a stop, but we already have that.
Right.
If it's a pretext-based concern, the concern is in the existing ordinance, so the amendment doesn't impact that. It is a training question and a training issue for staff and for officers. Anecdotally, I can tell you that I haven't seen noise being used as the basis for a stop. I don't see everything, but I, the ones that I've seen, that's not what the, the, the stop was initiated for.
A very easy Google search comes up with a ton of information on this kind of stuff.
I don't doubt that it is used by many locations, I just can't tell you that I've seen it used here.
Sure, and I'm not saying that it would be or that it is. I'm just saying that given the fact that there is a correlation between those two things in general, not here, not in this police department, but in general, and given the fact that we are discussing cleaning this up, one of my concerns is taking those things into consideration.
And, and if I could, I want to concur with Mr. Kirkland on the fact that our, our existing ordinance, by its wording, could be abused as you're describing also. So I don't, I don't think that us cleaning up the, the timeframes or the adding, changing the order of it so it streamlines more is going to add to any, to anything to do with the racial profiling issues you're referencing. I'll also add that really this came about, and I've already referenced the, the exhaust noise, but, well, number one, let me address the shortage. We are short on officers, and I've even said to Mr. Kirkland and others, city staff, that even with this, I don't know how well we'll be able to enforce it because we are so shorthanded. But I want to add that this, this came about because someone, or one of the complaints that actually I think came from one of y'all, one of your constituents, was that she can't even hear her television on East Austin Street because of the exhaust, the, the loud pipes.
That was mine.
Okay. And, and she and I conversed back and forth about that. And she said it's just unbearable on her stretch of road that they have to keep the closed caption on their TV to read the television program because they can't hear it. And so that was just one of many of the, of the complaints we got. And it wasn't even referencing music, it was the loud exhaust. And so that's been six months or so ago, and, and that was one of many.
Yeah, the only cases that I've prosecuted in court were complaint-driven. So I, somebody maybe stopped and pay a ticket or stopped and something else comes about. But the only cases that show up in court have been where there was a complainant, a citizen, who was unduly influenced or had, had their interference of their property because of the noise that someone else was creating. To answer the first question you asked, which was, did we consider while we were doing this rewrite, that issue, the rewrite was not written with that issue in mind.
I understand that, and I also understand that, like you both have said, amending it doesn't make it more likely. I wanted-
So the question back to you would be, do you want to remove those pieces from the ordinance entirely?
What pieces?
The pieces that address, I, I think you're suggesting that the radio is the one that would be, I, I, I'm sorry. Which pieces do you think are used for profiling and?
I would need to look more into it. What I have seen is, and I have a question actually on one of the things. What I have seen more so has been car stereos.
Right.
And music coming out of cars, not like parties and not the vehicle exhaust. Although I think that there's a difference between, and I don't understand this, but like people who, do they, are they like mufflers that they buy that are special, that make their trucks really loud or motorcycle?
They're altering their exhaust.
Yeah, so is there a difference in decibel sound between that and say like a car that's not running properly and makes noise? Because it's like old or rundown or something.
And they're, and they're both, they're, they're both problematic. They could easily have the same decibel range as each other. And some of them, some, some you, you'll see, you could, or you speculate whether it's intentional or, or it's just a bad running vehicle.
So the ordinance speaks to purposely modifying your exhaust to create more noise. And that's by itself a prohibition under the ordinance. That would be distinct from the folks that have not maintained their car or can't maintain their car for whatever reason, and the exhaust again creates a noise issue.
But they would still be subject to the ordinance?
They would still be subject to the ordinance, yeah. Yeah. The noise from the, the noise from the exhaust system indicates other problems with a vehicle that violate other parts of state law as well. So I would tell you that when it comes to vehicle equipment violations and frankly documentation violations, the prosecutor's discretion is used toward, if you fixed it, whatever caused it, we are working toward dismissal of the case. But we need proof of that, so that compliance is the key. Compliance is the goal, and if they get compliance, then the prosecution is happy. That's not written in policy, it's just what I assume you all want me to do.
In terms of enforcement practically, how would this work out, Assistant Chief Terravella? So if like someone complains because someone's listening to their music too loudly as they're driving past, by the time they call anyone and anyone's able to go over there, that person will have driven past. So what do you guys do in that situation?
If they don't have a, if they don't know who the person is, if it doesn't live on their street or in their neighborhood, or they didn't get a license plate, there's not much we can do. Many times they get a license plate, and this goes for both loud vehicle music out of a veh, loud music out of a vehicle or even the exhaust. Sometimes they do get a license plate, and we have followed up on those, especially if it's something here local in town. Our officers have gone by and visited with them, and, and if it's a young person, they even talk to their parents and said, "Are you aware this exhaust is, is illegal?" And just by emission standards, if nothing else. And so we have followed up on that. If there, if there's no license plate and there's no, and the officer didn't see it and we just get a phone call that a loud vehicle just drove down my street, then there's not a lot of recourse.
Back to your question, Mr. Kirkland, about what I am proposing. The answer is I'm not sure yet.
Would we, would you like to work with me on that?
Yes, I would, was going to be my question to you.
I am, as you know, I am not loathe to bring back revisions to my work, to you all to have, to enhance the work. I, I think you need the amendments, the revision now, just so that we have a clear basis, a clear point and a place to work from.
I would be fine with moving forward with that if I were, with the understanding that I could work with you and show you what I've found and see if there are any revisions that can be made. I would be fine with that.
I, I have, the racial profiling issue is one that I've been struggling with how we address it systematically. What can, what, what guardrails, what guide route, guideposts do we need to put out there to make, make those numbers get better? And to make life for our minority citizens get better, and to build trust. And if there's a way in this ordinance that is being used to undermine that, then I, I absolutely want to jump in and try to fix it. I can also tell you, there's nothing in this ordinance that I haven't heard people complain about. So-
Yeah, but I mean, that doesn't necessarily point one way or the other. I mean, it could, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if, I mean, I'm fine with doing that if, if that door is open to work with you.
Yeah, that door is open, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And actually, we have a lull in the city attorney's time, so I'm happy to give you some.
So are you suggesting that, I'm good with whatever you want to do. Are you suggesting we postpone adopting this for a little bit while you work together? Or go ahead and adopt it and then later on you'll work?
It seems like the revisions, just because it's such a messy ordinance currently, it seems like the revisions need to be made now. And I'm fine with doing that with the understanding that we're going to look at it and see if we can tighten or change or better based on my concerns.
I think we're all-
Ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
I move that we approve the ordinance outlined in six F as written.
I'll second that motion and ask one additional question before we vote. No, it's okay. On engine braking, that's the thing that I get the most complaints about because the sixty-five mile per hour section of the loop is in my ward. And as they are supposed to go down to forty-five miles an hour at, as they go to exit south on fifty-nine, they don't realize they're supposed to slow down, and so they do that. And it's particularly, the complaints I receive are from those inside the loop, just around the, the Mockingbird, Old Lufkin Road area. Do, do we have signs that say that engine braking is prohibited in the city limits?
We don't currently. And actually, our existing ordinance, it's worded a little differently, but even our existing ordinance prohibits brake braking, engine braking.
There are some signs around, I have to correct you. There are some around, they're just not prominent, and they're not everywhere you want them to be. And frankly, any signage on the south, the entrance from the south gets lost in all the constructions. So if there is one there, you wouldn't see it.
I think the bigger issue is from the north, is traffic headed southbound as they enter the city limits at two fifty-nine in that area. Knowing that there is an ordinance in place, I mean, I don't recall seeing any on that side.
I don't know either.
And if we have it in ordinance that that is prohibited and we don't alert the traffic, I mean, that's really designed for out-of-town visitors, right? It's not for our, our regular everyday person because they're probably not going to be going that way anyway. So just a, just a thought on how we can help people comply with it, not just enforcement, but just compliance, which is, as Mr. Kirkland stated earlier, that's really what we care about. We don't, I mean, we're not trying to cite people for, for traveling through Nacogdoches. We really care about not causing undue harm with, with noise.
And if there is, if there is, if there are any, I apologize, I wasn't aware of that. But the, the signage, like Mr. Kirkland said, it gets so lost in just sign clutter with construction. But, but we, we will certainly, once this is amended and passed, get with Public Works and add signage both on South Street. Because at South Street, you, you can hear the, the engine braking also on South Street itself, south of the loop. And so we can add signage to, to the, to that area.
Sure.
My, my one complaint, by the way, was the high school band, and that was unreasonable, they thought. But I assume you won't be giving tickets out there, so.
I hear, I hear the stadium at my house, and, and at this time of year, almost nightly, because I use the stadium for, yeah, because I use the stadium for all the playoffs from other schools. So I hear scores and I hear bands and I hear everything.
Call the question. Those in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.